No? Okay. All right. And with that, we will call the meeting to order at 6:01. And roll call, please.
Erickson.
Here.
Gorham.
Here.
Calarus. Woodward.
Here.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Duval.
All right. Do I have a volunteer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, Jaeger. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair, Jaeger.
Second.
Right. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And on to the approval of the minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move, Erickson.
Second, Gorham.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Right? Motion carries. And let's see. We do not have old business. On to our new business, item 7A. And that is the variance form, variance from fence height setback standards for 401 Holly Street. And Community Development Director Cranwick, could you please set us up for that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So first thing I wanted to let the planning commission know is that this variance request is using the previous zoning code because the original fence permit was issued under the old code. So Kelsey Randall has submitted a variance request at 401 Holly Street to exceed the side yard corner setback requirement for fences greater than four feet in height. The applicant is requesting a zero-foot setback along the north Fourth Street side yard corner property line for the construction of a six-foot-high wood fence. Section 515-54-7B requires a 20-foot front yard setback in the R1 zoning district. Section 515-19-7.C requires a 20-foot setback from the side yard corner property line for fences greater than four feet in the R1 zoning district when a rear yard abuts a side yard. So I'll explain some historical context to the planning commission, to the fence construction at this property. So the original permit was issued in air by the city of Brainerd. Under the previous code, six-foot-high fences typically must align with the front facade of the principal structure. Corner lots have two front facades. It was issued under the front facade. However, in this case, where the rear yard abuts a side yard of a neighboring property, under the old code, the required yard of the neighboring property becomes a setback for six-foot fences. In this case, it should have been 20 feet from the side corner property line. Also, with an established fence and no property pins, the city should have required a signature from Mr. Marone to issue the permit. So Mr. Marone did make the city aware of this error and directed staff to this error. Staff directed the applicants at 401 Holly Street to stop construction. The applicants were then directed to either adhere to the code of ordinances as is or apply for a variance. So with that, this variance request, variances shall only be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinances and may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning code. So on the application, the applicant stated that this variance request will improve the safety and privacy for their family and pets on corner lots. They also stated that their corner lot gets a hospital overflow, parking, traffic on both sides, can be very noisy, unsafe, and gives zero privacy. The applicants also stated that losing this part of their yard will leave an awkward space in the yard and require losing the lilac shrub that they have in that side yard. So the applicants are in attendance tonight and may have additional practical difficulties to discuss. So with that, the staff opinion is that this time on the application, it is not, the applicants have not demonstrated a practical difficulty in complying with the zoning ordinance due to circumstances that are unique to the property. So with that, I'll open it up to the planning commission for any questions.
Does anyone have any additional questions for staff?
I've got one question.
All right.
For James. James, you mentioned the original permit. Under that, it should have been 20. What was the setback?
So the setback aligned with the outermost front facade, which is approximately 13 feet from the property line.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes. What's our definition of facade? I know there was some question about whether the definition was a garage or something next to it. What is our definition?
Yeah, so being under the old code and how staff had been historically issuing permits, we had defined it as part of the foundation, up to the roof, fully enclosed by wall, kind of heated space of that principal structure. So the next agenda item, we'll be discussing how we're going to be interpreting the new code, since we do have that new code. But under the old code, that's how staff had been interpreting it.
And that would include the garage that is there? Would the garage be part of it? Is that considered?
It's a facade, but the old code reference lining up with the front facade, and that's why it had, I guess, been issued incorrectly at that height or setback.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, real quickly, thank you, Madam Chair. James, just real quickly, I want to clarify one point. When the applicant came forward for the initial application, they believed that they walked out with a permit that would allow them to build that fence in alignment with their front facade. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And they are now asking for a variance to build, not only to that front facade, but out to the sidewalk. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I know we discussed this. The front facade is 13 feet. That's the front facade number?
There would have to be a string line and a measurement on it, but that's the approximate number.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission for staff? Hearing none, we will open up the public forum at 6:08. And we'll open that up, hearing from our applicant, please. All right. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jesse Hartman from 401 Holly. I'll be speaking on behalf of Kelsey. So I have some photos that I have brought with me that I'd like to provide for you guys, if that's okay, if that is allowed, so that while we go over some of this stuff, you guys can visually see what we are talking about. Is that all right?
Yeah.
I would also like to start off with, when we had originally applied for the fence, we knew from the beginning that we were going to be going for the variance eventually to go to the sidewalk. We were building it within the city codes. That's where we were going to start. We were going to pursue the variance from there. And this just all kind of snowballed. Stuff got misinterpreted, some miscommunication between the parties. So that's kind of where we're at now. So we put together, sorry, one more.
All right.
I'll kind of start with what we have put together. The pictures just show our landscaping, the front fence where the existing fence is now. It's a four-foot fence where it runs along the sidewalk. That is where we are asking to go to, following in the exact footprint of the old fence. So whether that's six inches back, a foot back, we're not necessarily asking for zero, just where the existing fence is already sitting. So let me start by thanking you for considering our request for a variance. I was given misinformation on how to fill out application appropriately when under the impression you would like to hear about my family's safety and privacy. As crucial as those things are, we have far more practical reasons I would like to go over with you all. I believe I can prove to you beyond a doubt that denying a variance will not only be financially and physically detrimental to us, but also aesthetically displeasing to our neighbors and neighborhood. I have attached photos for you, and I will re-reference them throughout. If I talk a little funny, I had a dentist appointment this morning I was not knowing I was going to have, but, so it's a little numb, so work with me. To start, we have a garden bed that runs the entirety of our existing fence and down the driveway. In denial of the variance, we will be rather unsightly, it will be rather unsightly, and have to be reconfigured. The only feasible option we have come up with would be to take the garden beds out in its entirety and extend the driveway pavers to the fence line. Unfortunately, we have had a quote done on the original pavers, and they are tough to come by. The closest match that we found would cost us a little over $4 a paver and bring in the total cost to almost $3,500. Pretty expensive. So that option is not within our budget. On the inside corner of the left side of the lot, looking out, we have a beautiful lilac bush slash tree and our corner garden bed. This would now be on the outside of the fence, not only meaning we lose our beautiful lilac and garden bed, but now we have to reconfigure the whole landscape to make it aesthetically pleasing and within city code, again causing us unnecessary labor and financial burden. We have tried to come up with a solution that means we are able to keep the tree and garden, but feel it will look somewhat out of place and most likely will have to be removed, which will cost even more. We have an in-ground irrigation system. As you know, this is quite costly. And if the fence line is moved, the sprinklers will then have to be moved to the new fence. We will, the sprinklers that are installed will no longer be within the fence line. The process of installing a new sprinkler means the city will have to come out and mark any gas slash electrical lines. We will then have to tear up more of the yard, causing more unnecessary damage to the place, to place new plumbing and sprinklers. The cost of this will be a tremendous financial burden on us. Pulling the existing fence out and putting the new fence to the front facade of our house, as we are now permitted, involves tearing up the yard quite a bit. And the fresh grass will need to be laid, fresh grass will need to be laid or seeded, which is yet another unnecessary expense. We have done quite a bit of scouting. We have found seven fences, many of which are six feet within our neighborhood and close proximity to our neighborhood. All go to the sidewalk or to the right-of-way. By allowing us the variance, we are keeping, we are keeping with the theme of the neighborhood. Allowing the variance does not harm, does not impede anyone's view, and will improve the overall look of our yard and the entire neighborhood. Every neighbor we have spoken with agrees, except for one, that this will only, we can get that in writing, that this will only improve the neighborhood. The one neighbor who opposes this is opposing the fence in its entirety and feels that by the city granting us this variance, that he will no longer have legal grounds to continue to pursue us or the city. He feels this is why we are asking for the variance and is under the impression that only, the only way we are being allowed a fence is by, is by being granted the variance, which couldn't be more false. As you know, we in fact have a legal permit and have broken no laws and have followed every instruction the city has given us to this date. He has continued to harass, slander our name and business and try to make us out to be criminals, when the only person that is breaking the law is himself. We have been issued a harassment order against said neighbor, yet he continues to harass us. His opposition of the variance is purely personal, and he has no practical reasons to oppose it. If our neighbor could find it in himself to calm down and think about this, he would find that this variance request is also beneficial to him and will improve the appearance of his yard. As you can see in the photos, where the fence stops now, it will look rather strange. Being allowed the variance will make this yard more symmetrical and allow him to do what he pleases on his side of the fence. Place a garden bed along the side to the curb to match his other garden beds. Left the way it is now leaves very little to be done and an awkward, empty, unusable gap from the sidewalk to the fence. Overall, granting us this variance is not just in our benefit, but benefits the neighborhood as a whole and will help in keeping North Brainerd, the beautiful neighborhood we all love. We thank you for your time and truly hope you consider our request. And respectfully, whatever the outcome is here today, we will abide by it 100%. We will not contest it. We will not pursue this matter anymore. We would like the fighting, the arguing, and everything else to be done. We have complied wholeheartedly since the start of this fence. We're ready for it to be done, finish our fence, whether it be the setback, the variance. Yeah. I got a lot of material that's just going to waste right now, and it's been doing it for over a month. We need to get this figured out. I'd like to get it resolved today. So I appreciate you guys' time. I appreciate you letting us listen. Does anyone have any questions they would like to ask me?
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
And let's see, we are still in the public forum. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? All right. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Eggerter. I live at 615 North Fifth, on the block that 401 Holly is on. I had a lot more to say, but it's all kind of gotten covered. I walk that street a lot. And I would like to point out that 401 Holly never shovels their snow and parks their vehicles across the sidewalk, suggesting that maybe city ordinances aren't that important to them. But on the matter at hand, yes, there are a couple tall fences. But my understanding is you can run a fence down to the sidewalk as long as it's short. And I don't see what would be so ugly about a transition down to a short fence, going from where you legally can put, city ordinances is legally, legally, a 12-foot fence, or, I'm sorry, a six-foot fence. I don't public speak very well. Down to a four-foot and then across the front. You're not going to have to change your sprinklers. You're not going to have to move your lilac. You're not going to have to do any of that expensive stuff. And you're going to maintain the city ordinances. Walking, if, I can't imagine Brainerd, North Brainerd, any part of Brainerd, if 12-foot fences, I've got a thing about 12-foot fences. If six-foot fences are allowed on the sidewalk, yes, I know there's a couple. And you walk by and it's, I mean, you might as well be walking down the street in a city because there's absolutely nothing. You're in a tunnel. I think the change in character in Brainerd would be negative. So I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on the issue?
Oh, yes. Chuck Marone, 616 North Fourth Street. Thank you. I want to maybe start by clarifying one thing. The applicant indicated that they have a legal permit and have broken no laws. And I think, before we get too far into this, I want to just have clarification from the staff in terms of whether this permit is legal and meets the requirements of the code or whether this permit has been rescinded and will not be reissued in its current form.
Can you address that for us, Mr. Cranwick?
Yeah, so at this time, it has not been rescinded, but it does not meet the requirements. So it would have to meet both requirements of the code, which is the 20-foot setback, as well as, right now, the established property line is the fence. And he did not get Chuck Marone's signature.
I think there's been some ambiguity over where the property line is. And I have been very upset about this fence from day one. You got a letter from me going through a lot of my frustration about the interpretation of where the property line was. And I think we have an understanding now of how property lines are located in town, how in North Brainerd, we actually go about doing this. The applicant has the right to go get a survey and go through that entire process. You would require us to establish property lines throughout the entire block. That's open and available to them. But I have, and the city has in their file, an agreement with the prior property owner establishing the line. When I bought this house, I put in a fence. I went around, as the ordinance requires, and met with every neighbor, had a conversation with them. In the city's file is a letter signed by the prior owner of this property saying, "We have a shared common lot line. I agree to the placement of a fence along this common lot line." That's an agreement that is not going to be rescinded and certainly would not be rescinded by looking at a county GIS map. If we're in agreement that in order for construction to continue, in order for a permit to be issued, that I have to sign off on it to have it along my shared lot line, I'm not going to sign off on it in the current configuration. I gave you an agreement that I will sign, but I'm not going to sign for some slats tacked up on a rotting fence along our property line. I don't have to, and I don't intend to. My neighbors never spoke to me before doing this. One day, I'm having dinner with my family. We have company over, and all of a sudden, there's a guy walking up and down on my property, tacking up a fence right outside my window. I didn't go have a conversation with him. I didn't go engage with him. I went and talked to the city. And since then, we've been going through this process of, well, the lot line's on your lot, it's over here. I think we finally got that settled at this point. And if we're going to issue a permit, to me, this applicant has three options. Option number one, we have an agreement to have a boundary line fence. And if we're going to have an agreement to have a boundary line fence, it's going to meet the setback. I'm not going to agree to a zero setback. I'm not going to agree to have a wall along my property line. The second option is to go get their own survey and go through the entire process of re-establishing the lines on our block. I don't think that process ends anywhere except for the fence as the common lot line. But they have the right to go through that process. And if they can prove and determine that the lot line is somewhere else other than when it's been historically agreed to, then we will have adverse possession claims and litigation and go through that whole, but they have the right to go down that course. The third option, then, is they can move the fence five feet over. My understanding is they don't even need a permit from the city. If they want to build the fence five feet back from the setback, they don't need my permission, they don't need your permission. They have the capacity to do that. And so the applicant here is not robbed of options. They may have options they don't like. They may have options that are not preferable to them. They may have options that are going to cost them more money to move gardens around and move sprinkler systems around and what have you. But that's not a land use issue. That's not an issue that you deal with. That's not something that's in front of you. And so I'm opposed to this. I hope that you deny the variance in its entirety. I hope you direct the staff to deal with the error that was made in permitting, both by permitting a fence that was too close than what your ordinance allowed and also permitting a fence that did not have the proper and required signatures and permissions in order to build and issue a restoration order. I'm going to ask a clarification. Are you going to allow the public to speak when you have a discussion on the interpretation of the new code? If no, I would like to speak on that now. If yes, I'm happy to step back and we can continue this part of the public hearing.
I believe we can hold a public forum during the discussion of the facade interpretation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will end my comments then, and I'm happy to listen to your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marone. Is there anyone else who cares to speak?
My name is Krista Sukup. I live on 606 Bluff Avenue. Thank you for having us, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. I am the president of Brainerd North Side, excuse me, Neighborhood Association. And we, our board, is made up of individuals from around North Brainerd. And we have looked at the documents from the city and looked at the situation, trying to keep an open mind. And we value all neighbors' opinions, and we want to live cohesively, and we want to all get along. We are not in favor of this variance on any, none of us are. We've also talked to several other neighbors that aren't specifically on the board, that are not in favor of this. We are concerned with the look of these tall fences going up all of our neighborhood as a whole. We believe that there's plenty of space and rural, beautiful areas in our county and within our city to have larger fences, privacy, hold trailers. As of now, this particular property, the other thing that's concerning with it is there's a fish house parked in their lot. So they have the 12-foot fence, and then there's a fish house. We are adamantly opposed to, and I believe that's the city ordinance, to not have vehicles, trailers, campers parked in a yard. And so I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Neighbor's Association and that we are not in favor of this variance. And we hope that whatever happened with how this came to be in this situation, we can move forward with making sure that all residents have clarity and everything is a little bit more black and white so we don't have this happen, and we don't have fences going up where it ends up costing people more money when there's not clarity. So I thank you guys all for working on behalf of the city. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sukup.
Zach Skerwood. I live at 703 North Fifth Street, a couple blocks away from 401. I would just like to say, everyone that's came up here, for the most part, has said how they do not like a fence on a corner lot. They're too high, all of that. I get that you should have some setback, that I'm not asking to build a fence right along the road. But all these people go back to their houses, which have a fence in their backyard, which give them privacy, which they can go and play with their kids and not everyone in the whole neighborhood's looking at them. I just feel that living in a corner lot, that shouldn't be any different than the person next to you. When the person next to you, across the street from our house, there's a rental. No one ever takes care of the rental. There's tar paper on the roof, and we called the city multiple times. The city said that it was fine, it was just a temporary fix. Well, now we're going on five years. It's a little ridiculous. We deal with people moving in and out. And we deal with the last renter that was in there, their dogs were running across our backyard after our kids. We had to run after our kids, grab our kids, so the rental, just because that, we didn't have a fence here. Also, we deal with just everyone walking by and seeing our stuff. Like I said, there's plenty of other fences in the neighborhood. There's a fence I can see from my back window, which would be my neighbor, which would be my next-door neighbor's side yard. They built a six-foot-high fence. Two weeks later, now they put a foot and a half lattice on top of it. It's same thing. It's, should be no different, I guess. And that's why I feel like, living in a corner lot, if we abide by and set off from the street properly, so there is no sidewalk on the side of my house. If there was, there'd be plenty of room to put a sidewalk. But I feel that if I went off my front facade, it would put, get rid of at least a third of my yard. And that's where my kids run and play. And I just feel that I should be able to put a six-foot-high fence. Also speaking, my wife was standing inside our back porch about a week ago, and the ice cream man came around, and he, my five-year-old son was standing outside. He was the only one out there. There was no other kids. And the ice cream man stopped in the corner, like on the street, and kept waving for my kid to come over to. That's not acceptable. You can't wave for a five-year-old when no parent is outside watching to come to your ice cream van and get ice cream. Like, that's why I want a six-foot-high fence, so I don't have to deal with that. I can trust my kids going in the backyard and playing and everything else. And that's why I feel that a six-foot-high fence would be acceptable if it properly set back around the whole property on a corner lot, because it's no different than anyone, like I said, all these people that came up here, for the most part, go back to living in their house that's in the middle of the block in their house that's in the middle of the block, that have a six-foot-high fence around their whole house. And that's why I feel like I should at least get the same privacy they do. Thank you.
Could you please state your name one more time, we didn't get it clearly for the reading.
Zach Skerwood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who cares to speak? All right, yes, but we'll have a three-minute time limit, okay?
401 Holly, Jesse Hartman. I just want to touch on a few things. She is correct. There are times that I have lacked to remove the snow, because when it snows, I have customers that call, and I make my, I make everyone in my community a priority over mine. I go out and I work till 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, 18, 19, 20-hour days. And I'm sure he can contest, and she has seen it, and by the time I do get home, after helping everyone that is on my list, 55 and above, who comes before me, I go out, and not only do I do my property, I snowblow the city walkways where the plows have buried them, I do the entire walkway. I've even done Chuck Marone's walkway from the sidewalk to his car, being that I felt it was narrow and unsafe for slipping before the fence. So, those are times that, yes, am I always in compliance? No. Is it intentional? Do I go out of my way? No. My priority is other people, and I've put other people first through the entirety of my company, and I will continue to do so. And I will continue to pick up the burden of doing it late at night, and sometimes doing extra to apologize for it. Have I parked on the sidewalk at times? Yep, I have, due to situations. My driveway also extends beyond the sidewalk. Am I not allowed to use that? Most times, I do, I park, I roll back till my tires touch the street, so that my front bumper is as far away from the sidewalk as possible, leaving a gap to walk, and I do my best to work with people on that situation. As far as my fish house, yep, it is parked in my property. It's $47,000. I complied. I parked it elsewhere. You know what happened? $18,000 worth of theft. I lost everything. So, my neighbor didn't have to see my fish house. So then, I spoke with James, asked if I could park it, if it's legal, and I parked it at the back rear of my lot. If you don't like seeing the stuff I own, that I enjoy, and I have a right to use my property for my recreational vehicles and things of them nature, they are behind the facade of my home, they are actually behind the facade of my neighbor's home, who is 13 feet off the setback. I think that was failed to be mentioned. I am over 40 feet from the setback with my ice house. I don't think that breaks any codes. I think there's a few things here where we've talked about, well, if you build a fence, it looks like a city. You're right, we live in a city. That happens. I should not have to move to have privacy. I don't pay taxes to be told I can't have privacy. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present who wants, wishes to speak on the issue? Stephanie, do we have anyone online? Then, if there is no one else who wishes to speak on the issue, we will close the public forum at 6:33. And we'll bring discussion back to the commission. Mr. Jaeger.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I have a quick question for staff, don't mean to put you on the spot here, James, I think this will be easy for you to field. If we take action on this variance application tonight, in one way or another, it does not supersede the points that Mr. Marone brought forward that still need to be addressed. The use in the side yard, the trespass law, all of those things would be in case in either scenario, correct?
That's correct, so we still have to address those.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to continue on in kind of where I sit on this, you guys. First of all, I'd like to thank the, you know, thank the applicants for coming forward, bringing forth testimony. I know it's no fun to stand up in front of everybody and deal with all this stuff. I'm angling for a 12-foot fence at this point, just to keep you guys apart, but all jokes aside, here's where I am at with this fence. Coming from the mindset or lexicon of planning and zoning, I'm always trying to look at the bigger picture, if at all possible. I know we have two applicants with one fence dividing two properties, so this seems very micro view what we're looking at here tonight, and I believe it should be, because it's a variance application. But what I did prior to this meeting is I drove around all of North Brainerd, and I did the exact same thing that you did, sir. I looked at instances of six-foot fences that were encroaching on the road setback. I hated every single one of them. That's my issue here. Greater nonconformity, especially in the instance of precedent, is a very dangerous path that I would like to see us try to avoid, if at all possible. That's my issue here. My issue isn't whether it would look great, or whether it could be built to the standards of the city, that kind of thing. I believe that city dwelling, in general, embraces a neighborly-type atmosphere. I believe that's why people move to the city, it's why I moved to the city. And one of my kids run across the street and play in the neighbor's yard, and half the time have no idea where they are, but know they're safe because they're in a neighborhood. Six-foot fences don't help that, that mindset of community for me. So, where I'm going, where my direction is going with this is that while I fully believe and acknowledge that people should have the ability for privacy within their own backyard, I have a six-foot fence in my own backyard, I believe that bringing it to the fence in almost all scenarios, I haven't seen one that I like, and that I believe embraces the nature of a neighborhood. So, for that, I'm going, for those reasons, I am going to be against approving this variance application, and I will send my comments down to the group, so.
So, I'll just weigh in, you know, so I just wanted to recap just briefly, for, you know, sake of my thinking through this. Original permit was issued in error, allowing for a 13, roughly a 13-foot setback. In error, it should have received the neighbor's signature, property line should have been clarified, and it should have been a 20-foot setback. And now, with the variance request, they're looking for a zero-foot setback. And I guess, as I've been looking through this, I don't want to, I guess, move backwards and, you know, even rescind the permit. I think we've got to find another neighborly solution to figure this out. And as I was looking through the application, I don't feel that there's a, that they meet the threshold for the variance, so I'm not going to support the variance. I like fences, I like six-foot fences, I really do, I like fences, I want people to do what they want to do with their properties, but I think we have to have some reasonable setbacks, so I don't support the variance, I don't like the zero-yard setbacks, and I don't think it meets that. So, I'm for working through some other solutions, but I'm not going to support the variance.
I think I'd be in line with the previous comments here. I think the important thing, I think we've kind of gotten away from what we're supposed to do, which is to interpret ordinance, and gotten away from where things went wrong. Things went wrong with the first permit, that's where things went wrong. And I think a variance is just going to make problems worse, if we go with a variance. So, I'm not going to be in favor of a variance.
On that note, I'm also along the same lines as that, the, to add a variance to a permit that has already not necessarily met specifications is a continuation of violations. To continue the violations and to continue to allow trespassing on a neighbor's property is not what the commission is allowed to do, it's not what we're appointed to do, it's not within our authority. The commission cannot permit trespassing for any reason. We also, I don't know how a fence would be constructed on a lot line without trespassing, I don't know how the maintenance would be done without trespassing on the neighbor's property. It's not possible. I went through the exact same situation with my neighbor, who was, who got their permit and was putting their fence one foot off the lot line, and a little while later, their construction moved around their bush and onto my property, and I ended up with a trench on my property that my daughter twisted her ankle in. They dug holes in my lot, they trampled my lawn. It's, the permit does not allow trespassing on another's property without consent, and that's what that letter is, is that letter means consent to be on their property. Let's see. Do we have any further comments from the commission? And, Community Director Kramvik, if I can put you on the spot again, what would bring this back into compliance, their current permit? What would, would their current permit allow them to continue construction, or to finish construction as they have, or would they need to reassess what they're doing, perhaps get a survey and...
That would probably be the first step, to recommend getting the property pins located. And then, beyond that, you know, the attorney could answer questions about trespass, you know, we'd certainly have to take a look at that, on how that's related to the permit, but then the required setback would be 20 feet.
Okay. And it is my understanding from the city attorney that we are not permitted to allow the discrepancies on the property line, that it would need to be sorted out with a survey before we allow somebody to go onto their neighbor's property.
So, we're actually, everything that we have looked at and seen shows that our fence is within three feet of the property line, and we already planned to have a survey done. They're three feet out, so we're already planning on doing that, but we also have no...
Can you come up to the microphone and speak, please? And identify, give your name and address.
Kelsey Randall, 401 Holly. So, everything that we have looked at, everyone we have spoken to, the GSI maps, everything show that our fence is actually three feet in on our property line. So, in doing this, at the beginning, we thought we were within our property, all right? Chuck wants to contest this, which is fine, and we're willing to pay for a survey, we've agreed to that, we will do that, and then, if we are on the property line, we are more than willing to move our fence however far back off the property line, we have to. Yeah. I think that's it, was that it?
The text message.
Oh, yes, and he's saying that we didn't have permission, that it was opposed. We were on his property for close to 20 days, he actually sent me a text message, and I actually have it, if I was able to show it, where it says, "We sure are going to miss the little white fence, but we get it, if you need any help, let us know." So, that's kind of, he's, you know, approving of the situation, right? But then, a week later, the city calls us and says, "We want to talk to you about the fence dispute." And we were like, "Well, what fence dispute? All of our neighbors are in agreeance." You know, he flipped, for, we don't know why, but no, it was out of the blue. So, when we went to get the permit for the fence, we told James, we said, "That is our backyard," and he argued with us, and he said, "No, it's your side yard." Did you not? Okay, he argued with us, we tried to tell him, "This is our backyard, not our side yard." They, so we were trying to correct him on issuing the permit, so that it wouldn't be incorrect.
Okay, do you have any other questions for me right now?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll continue discussion. So, Community Development Director Kramvik, was this the photo that was submitted with their application, for what type of fence?
That was submitted with the variance request.
Okay. Did they ever talk about changing materials and changing types of fence construction during the permit process?
We don't take a look at fence type ahead of time, you know, it's a six-foot wood fence, so we don't look at style.
...fence will look like when it is done. Nothing changed.
Madam Chair, as a part of our, when we're done deliberating, as, when we make a motion, we're just dealing with the variance, we're not coming up with solutions to fix this. You had asked, Commissioner Jaeger asked a question, kind of, to me, that kind of separated the solution to the variance. Are we, we're still just talking about approval or denial of the variance, correct? I mean, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I was going back to the comments about the, yeah, I'm getting sidetracked on the disagreement between neighbors, and that's not what this is about. The question on the table is the variance, not the disagreement between the neighbors.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to shut down deliberation or discussion, but I just, for me, I'm just trying to frame, you know, we're talking about just the variance, and we needed to make motion on that, and then, we'll have to figure out and sort out a few other things, I guess, after that.
From, do we have any further comments from the commissioners? Okay, then, it's my understanding that we're...
We'll all make a motion, if you're entertaining a motion, I would...
I will take a motion.
As I indicated, I would move to recommend denial of the variance request, for the reasons stated earlier.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second, Jaeger.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the commission on the variance request? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. All right. Then, moving forward on to, oh, sorry. Community Development Director Kramvik, can you give us the next steps on this, please?
Yes, next steps on this...
For the applicant.
Yep, it'll be, the variance request will be heard by City Council for a final vote on August 1st, Monday, at 7:30.
So, all right, so you have your next steps? Okay. Then, we will move on to 7B facade interpretation in new zoning code. And, Community Development Director Kramvik, can you set us up for that one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, City Council approved ordinance number 1535, which completely repeals and replaces Section 515 of the city's code and zoning map. This ordinance did go into effect on July 17th. The new code includes numerous sections of code that rely on setbacks or alignment of the principal building's facade and front facade. So, staff has historically interpreted, in previous code, that the front facade is the outermost face of the principal building, that extends from foundation to roof, covered by walls. That was the previous code, but with the adoption of the new zoning code, staff would like the Planning Commission to review example properties with different configurations and interpret front facade of the principal building, and to a lesser extent, after having the discussion of front facade of the principal building in relation to fences, have that discussion with the front facade in relation to the garage alignment as well. So, with that, the new section of code that pertains to fences is, except as prohibited by Section D, a fence up to six and a half feet may be erected from a line extended from the front facade of the principal building to the side lot lines, and then along the side lot lines and the rear lot lines. The new code has been attached to the agenda, and then, so with that, staff will be guiding the Planning Commission through different structures within the city of Brainerd, included alignments, potential alignments on some of these pictures, and then, staff options for these would be, had been listed here, is front facade is the furthest-most extension of the primary structure into the front yard that is part of the foundation, covered by a roof. Front facade of the principal building is the dominant face of the primary structure, essentially the main, main structure of the building. Front facade of the principal building is any portion of the primary structure facing the yard. And then, a question to be asked is, should attached accessory structures count as principal building front facade? So, with that, Stephanie put up the first picture here, the pictures that I did include, most of them are corner lots, and then, there's certainly variation additions that come off the side of them, as well as looking at the main principal building. So, this is example one, you have an addition off to the side of it, as well as the main structure of the building. If you want to go to number two, Stephanie? So, the next property is a property that, again, has, it's a corner lot, has an addition off to the side of it, two possible alignments, whether it's kind of that furthest-most corner there that's still facing the street, or the main structure. Next picture? So, this one has multiple variations of it, this one is very similar to the property that's in question here, where you have kind of multiple different levels here, where you have a, kind of a main front entrance that's smaller off of the house, you have the primary structure, and then you have kind of a... kind of a, an addition just set back, just, just barely set back from the primary structure. Next picture? So, we've been talking about, you know, kind of the historic neighborhood, but I did want to include a picture of some of the other houses that are, that are in Brainerd as well. This would be one of the newer constructions in North Town, where you have an example where the garage is actually the outermost section of it. And then, you know, where do we align that front facade? Is it the main door, or is it, you know, kind of that primary structure of the house as well? Next one? And this one, very similar as well, where you have multiple different levels, you have kind of an outermost area, and then again, with, with some additions off to the side of it, as well as the attached garage on there. So, with that, I'll open it up to Planning Commission to see if they have any questions of staff.
Does anyone have any questions for...
I have a question. What is the standard practice? What is the standard practice among, amongst other cities? What's the standard interpretation of this? Is there one?
You know, I don't think there's a complete standard interpretation, that's why staff's looking at it from, from Planning Commission to look at the interpretation based on the code that Planning Commission had recommended passing. I have looked at a few others. You know, I think with the way we have been doing it, as, you know, a part of the main foundation, walls, roof, I have seen other instances of that, but, you know, I've only looked at a few different variations of it, I haven't looked at multiple cities.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Community Development Director Kramvik? And... Then, we'll move into a public forum for this topic. And, we'll open the public forum at 6:52. Do we have anyone with us who would like to speak to this issue? All right.
Thank you. Thanks for indulging me on this, too.
You're welcome.
The question that was asked is, what do other communities do? And, I would say this, to preface, I've written a lot of the zoning codes in Crow Wing County. The neighborly provision that we had in the old code that we took out is what I think you'd find in most other cities' codes. There's always this conflict when you're on a corner lot, because a corner lot is someone's front lot, and it's also someone's rear lot. So, how do you, how do you triangulate that? How do you, in a sense, balance that out? And, in general, the way, there's kind of two ways it's balanced out. The first one is that the fence has to meet the setback of the interior lot, the front setback, in this case, that would be 20 feet, that's what our old code requires. Or, there's, in a sense, a string line test, where you would take the front, basically the corner of the two lots, and, and kind of moderate between those two, and say, "You can be in the midpoint of that." The reason why it's done that way is because you wind up with a situation like the situation that we have in, in my specific lot. And I realize, we don't make ordinances based on one lot, but I think our lot is, is indicative of the problems you run into when you remove the provision that, that we removed in the new ordinance. And, and that is that you have one structure, the corner structure, that is non-conforming. It's actually seven feet within the setback. And you have the side structure that is, you know, beyond conforming, it's, it's extra far back. And so, the, in a sense, the, the infringement, or the compatibility of the two are even further out of whack. I wanted to point out one thing about the current code, and this is a place where your staff and I are reading the ordinance different. Your ordinance defines what a building is, it also defines what an accessory structure is. They're defined as, you know, accessory structure is subordinate to the principal building, principal building is defined as, you know, the principal structure in its entirety, with residences and living quarters, and, and all the things that go into a structure. You also have provisions in your ordinance that limit the amount of, in a sense, accessory use, accessory structure use on the property. The way your staff seems to be interpreting it, is that if you have an attached garage with, in a sense, living space above, all of that is not part of the building, or the principal structure, or the structure, it is an accessory structure. And, I don't read the ordinance that way. The ordinance says the principal structure is the principal building, and the entirety of that. You would count the accessory space in regards to, you're adding up the amount of accessory space you're allowed, but you wouldn't look at that and say, "This one building that contains both living units and accessory space is now two separate units, a principal structure and accessory structure." I think that is a misinterpretation of the code. If, if you look at it as one structure, I think the idea of a facade becomes more nebulous, particularly in this case, because the front facade is actually in three different places. There's a, there's a front principal facade that encroaches within the setback, there's a architectural projection out beyond that, and then there is a conforming facade that was built many, many years later, back at the setback line. I feel like the easiest solution to this problem is to reinstate the good neighbor provision that was in the last code. And I would encourage you to interpret the new code in that way, until we could look at, you know, how to, how to deal with situations like this. Because I, I recognize what you were trying to do, I respect it. I get the idea that we want corner lots to be able to have a private backyard. The good neighbor provision in the prior code allowed that, and specifically in this situation, would have allowed it, the way you interpreted the last public hearing. So, thank you.
Mr. Kramvik, if I can ask you a question real quick? The good neighbor provision, I don't have the old code in front of me, was that the one that required the neighbor's signature?
Nope, so that one was the one that required, in the event that a rear lot abutted a side lot, that you'd require the, it'd be the required front yard setback of that neighboring lot. Yeah, it works probably in the, you know, the TN1 district, you know, there would be other issues, you know, some of our, some of our districts have zero lots, you know, zero lot setbacks, or, you know, five-foot ones, say, in the TN2 district. So, it would have to probably look something different from that, otherwise fences would be going to potentially the sidewalk in some of our other districts.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who wishes to speak on the facade interpretation?
Jesse, 401 Holly. So, as a builder, when you build a home, what, at what point does the home become a structure? The foundation. The home starts at a foundation. Your facade should be your foundation. I do agree, if you get a permit and you have a deck that extends, say, your setback of your front facade of your home was 15 feet, and I build a 12-foot deck, no, I don't think that, that leading edge of that deck should be considered a facade, because, and I will agree with Chuck, that is an accessory, you know, you put that on there, and it, again, is attached back to the foundation, which is where everything on a home leads back to its foundation. I think the front facade should be your leading-most edge, where foundation meets roofline. At that point, you, there's no other way I think you could interpret it. I think at that point, you have a foundation, the framing extends straight above that. It, I mean, it's, it's literally the beginning of the home. The foundation is the start. Not the eaves, not gutters, not decks, not accessories, it's the foundation. And that is the facade of a home, that is where it starts. Now, whether our garage is in front of that, behind that, again, I don't, I don't think it really matters. I think you go off of foundational line. So, you know, in our case, our garage is setback from the front facade of our home. Our, the front facade of our home is about 14 feet, is what I measured. And that's where we are trying to now bring the fence line, that is where we were originally trying to go, is the front facade. I know there's, the old code, the original setback was 20 feet. We had discussed that, we had taken a vote on that. The problem is, is me having a corner lot, right? I have to get permission from the front, from the city, from the side, from my neighbor, from the back, from my neighbor. You know, I have to get all these other people telling me what I can and can't do on my property, where I can put something, where I can't put something. I mean, there's got to be a point where you give corner lots a little bit of leeway. And the front facade is doing that. You know, Chuck's residence, for instance, is, I think, 13 feet behind the setback, because his home was built to use the alleyway. So, why should that impede how I use my yard, or where my fence does or doesn't go? It shouldn't. How they zoned that house, and how they built that house in conjunction to my home, which was even there before his, I should not be required to go off later building, or somebody else's structure, to determine my front facade. Being that I'm paying for the fence, that's where it should go, the leading edge of your home connected to foundation. And that's what I think a facade should be, foundation to roofline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else with us that wishes to speak on facade interpretation?
Kelsey Randall, 401 Holly. I kind of just wanted to say something more about what James and Chuck and Jesse were saying, but more about the good neighbor provision, or whatever. Sorry. So, as James was saying, like, if there's a house that is built, say, 38 feet back, like Chuck's, and then you have ours that is built 12 feet back from the street, so now we're expected, like, we, that would literally mean we don't get a yard. We're expected to go build back to his front facade, because of a good neighbor law, because he chose to build his house so far back from the setback? We're being punished? I'm just, I don't think the good neighbor law should be in the code, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on facade interpretation? Do we have anyone online, Stephanie? All right. Then, if that is everyone, we will close the public forum at 7:03. And, we'll bring the discussion back to the commission. Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can imagine, I have something to say about this. So, I'll just jump into it, but the spoiler alert is, is I believe that our new code has it correct. And I'm going to, I'm going to go on a bit of a diatribe to get us to that, but I'm going to tell you why I believe that the new code is correct. And I'm going to be asking to go back to some of our sample pictures, so when I get there, if you'll indulge me, that, that would be fantastic. So, facade, okay. So, the conversation of facade, I've had this conversation with other city planners in, in my working career, this is, this comes up especially on lake frontage, it comes up a lot in, in city planning. I think you have two main considerations, traditional neighborhoods and new-style neighborhoods, and they both act very, very differently when you're using the word facade. We are using the word facade here tonight with the, with the connection to how a fence connects to this house. So, pick any one of the pictures from the traditional neighborhood, I believe it would be one through three. Okay, so, one through three, in any of, in most of our traditional neighborhoods, what we're going to find is, is that in almost all cases, in a traditional neighborhood, the garage sits rear of the house, almost always, not, maybe not every single time, but almost always. So, to me, the language of the facade is the forward-most portion of the house, that is connected by foundation and roof, it's continual wall, but it is a space that could hypothetically conceal something behind. So, a porch, because it has a foundation or a roof, doesn't count, it's open. You would go to that wall that has the ability to either hold heat or conceal something behind. To me, that's the definition of facade. Where it gets tricky is with garages. And I'm going to tell you why I believe that garages should not qualify as facades. Okay. So, in a traditional neighborhood, the facade in extending a fence off of, off of the garage, in most cases, would not be problematic to, to much of anyone. Again, this is because the garage sits rearward of almost all houses in a traditional neighborhood. Go to example number four, and you're going to see where the garage being the facade becomes a gigantic problem. This is how we build all new neighborhoods, basically in the world these days. This is a snout-style house, the garage is out in front of the house. If you attach a fence off here, and you go to the next, pretty soon you end up with a neighborhood that is solid fence and garage doors, with absolutely no texture to that neighborhood. That is what we try to avoid, avoid, in my opinion, with, with any new style design of any neighborhood at all. And it's something we would absolutely try to avoid within traditional neighborhoods. So, in my opinion, if you just simply stick with the house portion as being the facade, not a garage, not an accessory structure, not a shed, not an attached whatever, if it is the house that has that ability to conceal or to hold heat within, connected by roof or foundation, I think that is the safest way, and, in my opinion, the, the middle ground to, providing an ordinance to both traditional neighborhoods, new neighborhoods. Now, tonight, we have in front of us the case of a, a, a situation where we have an extreme dynamic between a corner lot and a side lot. This put me into my truck, driving through the entire town of North Brainerd, making a list of every single house that has a rear yard facing a side yard. There are 31 of them that I found in North Brainerd, and, most of them are, the, the difference between the corner house and the side yard house are pretty minor, it's a few feet, right? In 13 of those occasions, the corner house sits in front of the side yard house. In 11 of the occasions, the side yard house sits in front of the corner house. That provides a whole nother wrinkle of problems. And I would suggest that if we were in this very same meeting, and the applicants were reversed, and the two houses were reversed, and the side yard was 30 feet in front of the corner yard, we would have the exact same argument, except in the opposite display. So, for that reason, I believe that the correct ordinance, which is our new ordinance, which says that you can extend off that facade, is the right way to do this, because I believe that it is the middle ground for most situations, if you look at it as a city as a whole. Certainly not in your case, Mr. Marone, in your case, the new ordinance is terrible, it's a horrible idea, we should be totally redone. But, we don't write ordinance for one particular case or instance. So, for that reason, my definition of facade is going to be heated, or, can, house, primary house, not garage, or accessory structure, connected by roof and foundation, that has the ability to fully conceal or be heated. That's all.
Two questions.
Yes.
If I could for Mr. Jaeger. I think at, at first you said forward-most, too, is that? Or is that not?
Yeah, so, to me, this is where you'll hear a term a lot of times called architectural features. These would be like kitchen bumpouts, living room bumpouts, bay windows, those types of things. Because I don't believe that the, that we should get into the weeds of, how big does it have to be to become the facade? Does it have to be 40%? Does it have to be 50%? I don't know. I'm going to say that if it's connected by roof and foundation, whether it's one foot or 19 feet across, if it is the most forward portion, it becomes the active facade, that's my opinion.
Thanks for the clarification, and then, if I could follow up, a question for, I guess, not a follow-up, but a question for James, then. And, I apologize if this is putting you on the spot, but under that definition, in this particular case, where would their setback be? Do you know, do we know what that, or maybe...
We can pull it up, and I can show you, but it, it would be the, what's, an architectural feature, there's a bumpout on fourth, that is, I believe dining room, I don't, I haven't been inside your house in a while, but I believe it's a dining room. It's about a two-foot bumpout from the structure, maybe 12 feet wide, 14 feet, I'm, I'm not sure.
It's a good chunk, it's a, it's angle-out face, angled-in, it's all to foundation.
It's our dining room.
Yep.
And I believe that would be the forward facade.
Of how many feet that would be the setback?
Couple feet.
It's 14 feet from the sidewalk.
That's it.
Oh, sorry, from the sidewalk.
I just figured I'd give you guys that, so that, I measured, James was there to witness, you measured it.
If it's connected by your, by foundation and roof, that gets you away from the bay window issue, it gets you away from the kitchen, or the, the bumpouts, the cantilevers, which are a common, commonplace item, it gets you away from all that jazz, if you just say it has to have foundation, has to have connected wall to roof, and be heatable or concealable wall space.
I'm supposed to follow him?
Yeah. Yeah, you've accused me of passionate speaking.
I have, I have. You, you did great.
I accept.
I, 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 I agree, agree with the basic notion of facade, uh, being part of the, the structure must conceal. I can't argue against that. I think it makes sense. So, yeah.
I think the, the verbiage defining that it is the, what did I put on my notes here? Two different pages now. That where the foundation meets the roof line. I think that, that makes sense to me as well. Um, what we are looking for here, um, with our facade interpretation in the new zoning code, the purpose of this is, um, well, we also need to address what does it mean to be constructed entirely within the property? That's the other point we need to cover. Um, and for me, to be constructed entirely within the property means that all of the building, all of the digging for post holes, all of the maintenance for the fence needs to be done without trespassing on the neighbor's property. Because we cannot grant permission to do that. It has to be done within the property lines. And if those are disputed or not agreed upon, then a survey is required. Um, but that is, that's my definition of what entirely within the property line means.
Madam Chair, I saw the, uh, the number five feet was, uh, was kinda put forth as a notion. Um, I've heard, Jesse, you mentioned one foot. I think one foot kinda makes some sense. I, I think that's pretty reasonable.
One foot is in there.
And as far as, you know, I mean, I have a neighbor who has a fence, and if the neighbor came over to my property to work on the fence, I would bring him a cold beer. I would say, "Thank you." It'd be terrific. But that's another story. I mean, I would hope we can live in a town where your neighbor comes over and says, "Listen, I'm gonna have a wheelbarrow over here. I'm gonna be working for a little while," and we can work it out. But again, that's not our job to figure that out. I think one foot is, is a reasonable number.
Yeah. One foot is within the permit required area, and I believe after five feet, then there's no permit required.
And technically speaking, my neighbor, um, needs to come over and mow my portion of the yard on the side of the fence, and he does it, and that's just fine.
You got a name? We'll call him out.
I, I got it covered. No, I got it covered. I got it covered. I, I don't mind mowing that foot. That's just fine. That's, that's, I'll, I'll do that. It's my neighborly duty. So, yeah, one foot.
I, I concur with that. I, I like the one foot, how you laid that out. Are we, for this then, are, what kind of action are we looking for?
We are looking for a motion to, to clarify what the facade interpretation in the new zoning code is to staff. Because there have been several different interpretations, there have been several things reinterpreted. We have a new zoning code that has been rewritten, um, or, and so what we need is an interpretation of what this is going to be. And I'd like that in the form of a motion.
Uh, just a question for James. James, is it enough that we, you know, go with our definition of facade plus one foot? Do you need things, do you need more clarity than that?
You know, I, I think it may be good to do in a motion form.
But I'm just, I just, in basics, is that the clarity you're looking for?
Yep.
Okay.
And the definition of facade that needs to be put in there.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes.
How is the one foot and the facade connected together in this one motion?
Probably do them in, in separate ones.
That's what I think.
Yep.
You have a facade motion for it? Well, I was, if, if Mr. Erickson has, I was waiting for Mr. Erickson to, uh, jump in. I was gonna, I was gonna give you the floor, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with how you laid that out. Primary structure extending from the foundation to the roof and can be enclosed and, and/or heated. Um, so, uh, please make the motion. I, I wouldn't. I, I, I agree, I'll just say in...
Would you like to articulate that for us?
I'll try, yeah.
I did very well. So I, I liked how you laid that out.
We're setting standards here.
So I would, I would...
I'll take a crack at the motion. All right, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to provide for staff the definition of, of facade to be the forwardmost part of a living structure that is connected by foundation, wall, and roof that has the ability to conceal or potentially be heated, not including accessory structures or garages.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Right, go. We forgot that. And to clarify, what does it mean to be constructed entirely within the property? What do we have? Community Development Director Kramvik. What do we have on a, is it, does it say specifically within the new code? I did not highlight anything.
Yeah, so the, the new code does state, um, that all fences or walls shall be located entirely within the property of the person or firm constructing the fence unless the owner of the adjoining property agrees in writing that such a fence may be erected on the common property line or respected properties. Um, in that case, we would need something pinned. Um, we need a survey line to do something like that. Otherwise, we would need written permission from the neighbor. Um, I think in the new application, we'll also have a provision in there, um, discussing what type of fence is gonna be installed, uh, to, to try to create not trespassing on the neighbor's property without a signature as well.
Does anyone have any more questions for staff on that? Any discussion on this?
Do we, uh, uh, need to define pinned, or is that, is that considered to be, we all know what that means?
Yep, a property pin survey would, I think, be, would, would, would have to be done in order to meet that one-foot setback then.
I, I have just a quick, I'm gonna complicate this just a little. I'm just gonna pose a question to, 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 to everyone here. But the, the, the current writing says you have to construct, construct the fence on your own property, right? It, it has to be on your own property. And, and if it's close to the property line, you have to get the permission of, of the next-door neighbor. I'm not sure that the current language doesn't solve this for us. Say, hey, you gotta, if you're gonna build a fence, you gotta do it on your own property and you can't trespass on the other. You may be able to do that fully from your own property. I can think of fences that you could build. Drive in a post, put, put the facing on your own property. You could do that two inches from the neighbor's property. There are other fences that are gonna take three feet. You bring in a post hole digger, you got spillage over to the next-door neighbor's property. So I'm not sure that the one foot will clear it up, clear up certain types of construction methodology. I, I kinda like just saying you have to fully construct it on your own property without trespassing. If it's gonna be on the property line, you gotta get the permission of your neighbor, period. If you think it's close, you better stay five feet in, make sure you're not on your property's line. If you got this going on, maybe ten feet in, but...
So you can be one inch, but you can't spill dirt on the other side?
Well, exactly. I, I, hypothetically, if it's your land, you own right up to the last one-sixteenth of an inch of it, and if you could conceivably build a fence somehow by some methodology and not get one blade of grass on your neighbor, more power to you. I'm not sure that the one fence navigates all possibilities for construction methodology. That's my issue here, is that I think the language solves it itself. Says you gotta build your fence in your own land. If it's close, you gotta get the permission of the neighbor.
Do we wanna use the word "close" or "on"? Because what's close?
Well, it was, here's the problem with "on" is, I think there's many, many, many cases where people have no idea where the property line is. So, uh, if you're gonna build it fully on your own property, you better be dang sure, right? And if, and if it's close, then I think you get that neighbor. But, yeah, I agree. I, I, I've known instances where people are off on property lines by twenty feet. It happens all the time, so. But the one foot wouldn't solve that either, because you would have to pin it. And if you could pin it, if you pin it, you know you don't, you can't be on your neighbor's property, whether it's one foot or three foot or five foot, either way, so. I don't know. That's what I'm thinking.
I, I agree with that. You know, you have to build it on your own property, can't trespass, and I think the current code has both those in there. So it would be no action then on...
Unless I'm missing something, maybe James would like to weigh in on something I might be missing here.
Kramvik.
Yeah, I, I do think, uh, you know, that's a, certainly a good suggestion there. Um, and I think as part of the application process, we'd include, um, what type of fence is being installed and, you know, direction on how that's not, you know, if it is up to that line and there's not a neighbor's signature, the properties are pinned, it would have to be a fence that Kevin was talking about, where it's posted with maybe panels in between, um, to, to be able to allow something like that. Otherwise, you just, you do get the neighbor's permission at that point. So I think that is, you know, uh, a, a good way to go forward, and, and it's how I'm looking at that application process.
Do you need any further clarification from us, or do you believe that we have the clarification on the interpretation of what is entirely within the property?
I, I think we have an understanding of what that, what that means.
All right, thank you. All right, then we have no action needed. And, um, you will have the opportunity at the forum at the end. Otherwise, we have concluded this. So then we will move on to seven C, our conditional use permit for the commercial daycare facility.
You guys are a hardy group.
Thank you so much for bearing with us.
You're gonna come to every meeting now. This is really, this is entertainment. What are you...
We have an opening on the commission.
Yeah.
There, there is a vacancy if you're having fun tonight. All right. So I will...
To Mr. Jaeger, bye.
We're educated. I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, my wife doesn't share your sentiment.
I will ask Community Development Director Kramvik to open this one up for us.
Okay, so this is a conditional use permit, um, for a commercial daycare facility at one zero zero two Laurel Street. Uh, Cassandra Kubish, uh, has submitted an application for a conditional use permit to operate a commercial daycare facility at one zero zero two Laurel Street. Um, so this property is located in the Town Center District. Per our new ordinance, this one is being, um, is being applied for under the new ordinance. Um, the commercial daycare facilities are a conditional use permit as regulated by Section five one five dash three dash four, uh, fourteen of the Brainerd zoning ordinance. Uh, the purpose of an intent of this, uh, of the Town Center is regulation, or the purpose and intent of, uh, commercial daycare facilities, the regulation of commercial daycare facilities in this ordinance is to establish standards and procedures by which daycare facilities can be conducted, uh, within the city without jeopardizing the health, safety, and general welfare of the daycare participants and/or the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, this section establishes the city's minimum requirements for the establishment of a daycare facility, which is not defined as a permitted use by the state of, state statute, or which are operated in places other than single-family homes. Daycare facilities defined as permitted uses by the state, uh, state statutes operate in single-family dwellings as an accessory use. Um, so with that, uh, that's just some clarifications of why daycare facilities are conditional uses, because they can impact other areas around them. Um, some of the other provisions within the conditional use permit is they do have to meet the lot requirements and setbacks of the district, which this, uh, property Uh, there also is a provision that it has to be connected to sewer and water, which this, uh, facility i- is, uh, connected to city sewer and water. Um, the building inspector will be, um, reviewing to ensure that all plumbing codes are adhered to with the construction of, uh, the, the proposed daycare facility. Um, so this is really the big difference, uh, from when this was originally heard. So this, um, just a little backstory, um, they did apply in two thousand nineteen, uh, for this as well. The conditional use permit did run out on that one after one year, um, because it was not used. Um, so they are reapplying. Um, at that time, and I did include that in the minutes, there was a parking discussion, um, an off-street parking discuss, discussion of, you know, where the drop-off is. Um, there still is the drop-off zone, which is sufficient to meet the ordinance. Um, there was going to be some requirements for off-street parking. Uh, that was in the B three district. There's no off-street parking requirements there, but staff was working with them to try to create off-street parking areas. Um, the new Town Center District also has no requirements for parking. Um, so staff is looking at that as, uh, that's something that they, I believe, are gonna be working out with some of the surrounding properties to do. But, uh, since we have, um, not a parking requirement in, in the Town Center District, that, uh, we shouldn't, you know, potentially be putting that into a CUP, which would forever kinda cause, or create off-street parking, um, for that area. I, you know, I think that, uh, um, we've heard it from, you know, multiple, uh, city council, the, and as well as Planning Commission, that, uh, you know, if there is off-street parking, you know, that's something that we can, can certainly utilize. Um, and then, and then essentially puts that, that off-street parking on the, the applicants to, to work out for themselves. The other sections, um, like I said, they do have a, a plan for off-street loading. Um, the only parking requirement that they will have is there is a small parking lot, um, just off to, uh, the side of the building. There will be a requirement, um, for one ADA spot, and that's part of the building requirement because there is a parking lot present. And then other than that, they'll have to meet, um, all, um, state requirements for the operation of daycare, uh, or a childcare facility. Uh, but with that, I will open it back up to the Planning Commission if they have any questions of staff.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I'm sorry, just one clarifying question about the parking. You just went over this, so I apologize, but, uh, the loading, one off-street loading space is required, and then also the handicap.
So one, so they, they do have off-street loading space that they're planning in the front of the building. Um, it's the same plan that they had before, that, that was sufficient in the, the old conditional use permit, um, from two thousand nineteen. Same plan for this one, off-street loading, um, areas in front of the building as long, as well as the side, um, side of the building. The, there is one requirement in the small parking lot off to the side of the building for one ADA spot.
Any other questions for staff?
The off-street parking with the one ADA spot, is that a paved parking lot, or is that...
It is a paved parking lot where they have that one planned.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions for staff? All right, then, we will open this up for a public hearing at seven twenty-seven. All right.
You don't have to come up.
You do not have to come up. Is there anybody else who cares to speak on this?
For four.
All right, then we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-seven. And, let's see. Any commissioner comments?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant, so you have to come up. I'm sorry.
Please state your name and address for the record.
The address of the property?
Your home address.
Okay. Denise Blood, one one three one five Leewood Lane, East Gullik.
My question for the applicant is, are you familiar with DEED? D-E-E-D.
I'm gonna say no.
Good, okay. So tomorrow, you call Bladech and you tell Tyler Glenn that the, uh, super savvy people on the Planning Commission told you to call him and figure out how you could get all kinds of free money for this project. That's all.
Thank you.
I believe it's a matching...
That's correct. Still free money. But you should call Tyler, or call Bladech, ask for Tyler, and ta, ask him what you need to do to qualify for money for this project, because unless I'm mistaken, this is a bell ringer for that type of project.
It is.
Thank you very much.
It meets all the criteria.
Is this new?
Doesn't matter. Oh, oh, you mean the application? Yeah, it's new.
I believe there is just an agreement, um, yesterday or today. So the application process is gonna be opening, um, and it's for properties that are, are located in the River Trails District. I know childcare is, um, you know, one of the things that, uh, is important, um, to, to this, but yes, it is a matching, matching, uh, uh, grant with, with the EDA. So, um, there's an application that, uh, Kevin alluded to with Bladech.
Absolutely.
I believe it's seventy-thirty on this project, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's what I heard as well.
Which means you put in 30, you get 70. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the commission?
I'd be ready with a motion.
All right, then we will take that motion.
I would move to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the operation of a commercial daycare facility at 1002 Laurel Street.
I'll second. Jaeger.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And next steps, please, Mr. Kramvik.
Yes, thank you. So, next steps is that this will be heard at the next city council meeting on August 1st for a final vote.
Thank you. All right, and 7D, we are up to the warming shelter. Mr. Kramvik, can you set us up for this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Jenna Shogren has submitted a request on behalf of Bridges of Hope for an interim use permit to operate a warming shelter for the homeless in the Brainerd Lakes area at 1926 South 7th Street. So, Planning Commission's familiar with this one. The applicants are reapplying for this one as their previous interim use permit expired after one year. So, I would say the main changes for this one, right now, in the code of ordinances, the past one as well as the new one, the operation may not exceed 16 continuous hours. They're asking, I believe, to go from 12 to 14 in this one and have some flexibility on when opening times are versus closing times, kinda based on the weather. So, that was kinda one difference there. The other, the other difference here is they're requesting essentially three years for this interim use permit. They can maybe allude to some of the reasons for that. So, with that, I'll direct it back to Planning Commission for any additional questions of staff.
All right. Do we have any commissions for, questions from the commission for staff?
I have one question. During the shelter's first year of operation, were there any significant complaints, any significant feedback to the city, one way or another?
Not so much that I'm aware of. I know the applicants are gonna be talking about that tonight and bringing up various facts regarding that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? All right, then we will open it up for public hearing at 7:31.
We're available to answer questions if you guys have a project.
Do you have anything you'd like to speak to at this time, or wait for questions?
Anne Honeycutt, 1822 County Road 2 for Ripley, and thank you for having us again. Just to recap, I forgot we did talk to the city council, but we obviously haven't shared our success at the shelter this winter. We were open 147 nights. We had 78 total guests with 942 nights of sleep. So, that averaged out to six guests per night that we helped homeless people in our community. So, just some of our stats, we had 29 individual referrals from police and hospital. So, that's a huge help for our community on misplaced people in our community, homeless people that are finding places to go and they're not allowed. So, 29 police referrals out of our 78 guests, which equals 22% of our guests were referred from police, hospital, and that's 208 nights of sleep for those guests. One of our biggest concerns that people brought forward at the beginning is, are we going to draw non-county residents to our community to stay at our homeless shelter? So, the numbers, if you look at the percentage, it looks high. So, non-Crowing County residents that use the shelter, 24% of our guests. If you look at the number of sleeps, .06%. And those are guests that are coming to Crowing County Jail for whatever reason, warrants from out of county. They get let out. They come to our shelter, they sleep one night. They take a bus and go back to the community where they originally came from. So, it's not drawing people. That 24% looks big, but if you look at the percentage of sleeps, .06. They stay for one night, they go. Three guests total are guests that were not from the area. One was the gal that Staples PD brought over and dropped off at Walmart. She had nowhere to go. Walmart closes now at 11:00 PM. Baxter PD dropped her off. She stayed the night. She found a ride back home to Bemidji the following day. So, she's considered a non-residential guest. So, three guests, if you look at the percentage, .01% of our sleeps for a complete total out of our county. Seven guests also that were labeled as out of the county were from Riverwood-Aiken County Police, Sheriff's Department, Cass County Sheriff's Department, which is Southern Cass, Pillager. Those are all Bridges of Hope service areas. So, we will accept guests from those areas. So, Bridges of Hope service area, 76% of our guests. So, that was very well. Another thing that was of concern, Chief Bestel, Brainerd PD. We have had full support through this project all winter with Chief Bestel. I would say between him and his police officers and a lot of the police officers in the community, it's been a huge success and also a help for them. So, total for the police department, we had five medicals that we had called the police for service. Two police calls, one was a domestic that was outside of our shelter, did not affect inside our shelter, was not involved with an intake process of our shelter. One was also a intoxicated male that was suicidal that was also outside of the shelter. Inside the shelter, we had no issues. Every guest was respectful, thankful. Our staff was absolutely wonderful. They are all, if our permit is approved, they're all coming back for next season. I would say that thanks to your commitment to this, our success at the shelter was amazing. So, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Sure, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You've mentioned the sleeps, the .06%. Is that percent of the 24 or of the 78?
So, if we look at 942 nights of sleep, so like the .06, that's taking those individuals. So, we have 20 individuals, but they may have stayed one night. Okay, so we're not having, when you look at 24% of the guests, like it seems like a big number, but it's because they're staying one night. So, if you take it divided by the numbers of sleep, that's how you get the .06.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
Could I ask another one then? And thank you, you did present this to the city council, so I have an advantage. This is the second time I've heard this. When you did that, there was, and you were referencing the calls, you or somebody had mentioned like the door was propped open or something. There was some issue with that. Can you address that, or was that resolved, or...
Yeah, so that's an alarm. Yeah, so that's an alarm issue, and I'm not sure if that was from, maybe the mechanism when it got cold, or maybe if somebody had came up during the day and maybe tried the door and maybe thought, you know, we were open. I'm not sure. I can tell you, even since we've been closed, just the other night, I had two calls at the door. So, I don't know if it's wind. So, they're just alarm calls, which, yeah, we will work with the security company and the landlord to make sure that we reduce those number of alarm calls.
And the reason I ask that is my concern, I guess, would be that if the door is being intentionally propped open by guests or something like that, or if they're coming and going.
No, all of those alarm calls, sorry, sir. Yes, all those alarm calls were when we were closed and no guests were on premise or staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, tell me about going from one year to three year. I think I have an idea of why you're asking to go for three years now, but I'd like to hear from you. You're asking for three years, correct? A three-year extension, is that right? Oops, sorry.
I'd tell you mine, but...
Okay.
All right, please state your name and address.
Hi, Jana Shogren. I'm at 7247 Lone Oak Road in Brainerd. I'm the Executive Director at Bridges of Hope. I appreciate Anne presenting to you as she was the boots on the ground at the shelter all winter long. It's really, you know, an administrative logistical issue. You know, if we want to be able to demonstrate a commitment to this project, if we want to do some longer-term fundraising, we have some mechanisms that possibly could be put in place, collaborations with Crowing County. We would need to be able to demonstrate that there's some longer-term commitment to this project. So, that's simply where it was at. We understood why the first year, we were given a few months. This was very experimental. We didn't even know ourselves how it would go and how long we wanted to commit to it. However, it went fabulously. So, we are willing to make that commitment should the city be willing to put that, to allow us to do that. Now, of course, there's still the recommendation from Mr. Kramvik that at any given time, should there be significant issues, that the Brainerd Police Chief could ask us to bring this back to council, and that could put the permit back in question.
Very good. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, Ms. Kramvik, no complaints that received from neighbors?
No complaints to the Community Development Department.
Okay.
And then, I just wanted to clarify one other thing with the staff opinion. So, they're actually asking for the interim use permit shall not expire until June 30th of 2025. So, that'd be, you know, potentially part of the motion. And then, Jana did allude to that as well, keeping that in there as part of the recommendation as well. If the Brainerd Police Department determines the facility has not, has been used in a disorderly manner and upon the recommendation of the police chief, the interim use permit shall be brought before the city council for review and consideration for suspending or revoking the permit at the next available city council meeting.
All right, since we are still in the public forum, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this issue? Then, if we have, and there's no one online? All right, since we have no other speakers on this issue, we will close the public forum at 7:41. All right, and we'll move the discussion to the commission.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment from me. I'd like the, I'll be supporting the motion for the interim use permit with the two conditions listed here. I had spoke with a concerned resident when this first came before us and also to council. Resident was very concerned and spoke with them just recently, and they, I asked them if there had been any issues that they had seen, and they said none. So, and they were also very supportive after the work that you've done. So, that was very encouraging. And I mentioned the two conditions as James did. I do like to have those in there. I feel that that helps you as well as your fundraising and, you know, it makes everyone feel at ease, you know, knowing that there's that check in there with the police department. So, I'm gonna support it with those two conditions.
Any other comments?
I appreciate the, I believe the last application was at 12 hours that it was in operation, and now it's moving to 14. As many of you know, I have the bookstore downtown, and I open before everyone else and close after everyone else. And my list of trespassed guests is shorter than that of the Holiday Station. So, I get a lot of frequent visitors before and after I open. Three of the gentlemen from the shelter voluntarily trespassed themselves when I told them they couldn't park their bikes on the rug in front of my store. But, all in all, they've, they seem like they've been some fairly decent clientele coming through. They do have a gap period between when the shelter opens and closes and where else they can go. The day center is not necessarily open enough days or enough holidays to accommodate a lot of those individuals, and they come in seeking refuge in our hallways and our facilities. So, I am encouraged by seeing extra hours of operation that hopefully we can move them into earlier. And if there's any encouragement that you can give the day center for extra hours of operation, that would be appreciated by the downtown business owners. Do we have any further comments? All right, then I will be looking for a motion.
I would move to recommend approval for the interim use permit contingent upon the following conditions. Interim use permit shall expire June 30th, 2025. And if the Brainerd Police Department determines that the facility has been used in a disorderly manner and upon the recommendation of the police chief, the interim use permit shall be brought before the city council for review and consideration for suspending or revoking the permit at the next available city council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second, Coram.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And next steps for the applicant, please, Mr. Kramvik.
Yeah, so next steps, this will be heard at the next city council meeting on August 1st at 7:30 in the council chambers for their final vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we will now open the public forum at 7:44. This is the time for, allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the Planning Commission. Time limits may be imposed. Is there anybody who wishes to add to the public forum?
That's up to her.
I have one simple offer to chug to end and resolve the fighting over the fence. I would like to move forward. I will offer one solution now to try to either agree or disagree.
That's not necessarily a commission, that's not something we have authority over.
Sorry, I would say if it's on the agenda, we should stick to our policy. And concerning that, maybe deal with it outside the meeting personally.
Yes.
No offense.
And I think after the meeting would be a good time to address that. All right, is there anybody else wishing to bring something forward to the Planning Commission? And we'll close the public forum at 7:46. And then we will move to the Community Development Director's report. Mr. Kramvik.
The only thing that I was gonna report on was the Deed Main Street Revitalization Grant. That's gonna be opening here. Bladech will be administering that application. So, we already talked about that. That's for properties in the River Trails District. There are certain things that they're looking for, small businesses is part of it as well. So, if there's any businesses that are looking for, or potentially doing projects in that River Trails District, please contact Bladech, and they can direct you to that application process. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, questions and comments?
I'll start. I just wanted to apologize for James. I had no idea the deed was on his CD report. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I've got nothing more.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me on my first time sharing.
Great job.
Quick comment. I wanna, I wanna thank, Teresa, you did a great job today.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I look forward to seeing more leadership from you in the future.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, and with that, we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Jaeger.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.